To start with, I did not put on the agenda, but I would like to just call our attention to the balance sheet. We have been talking about producing a balance sheet locally each month, and this was the first attempt. But you haven't gotten much feedback or comment on it, Joy. And I think because we're having the audit, which also has a balance sheet that will focus more on it next month. But I really appreciate the effort for a balance sheet, and I think it will become more and more important to us as we go on. The balance sheet basically gives us our status. And this is the first time that we're doing it for the monthlies. And it's very important. And it may also be that Victor could take a look at it and help us. But I wanted to recognize your effort and express my appreciation for it. It's a big step for us. So I don't know if everybody has the agenda. We have four things. Review the financial reports for September. Review unauthorized expenditures, which is necessary for payments. We then, I then raise it with the board, at the board, and we get a board approval, which is important. I want to talk about the auditor, RFP response and selection process. And then look at the budget, the 2021 budget. And adopt, we just need to review it. We'll adopt it at the board meeting. So as I look at the financials and have been looking at them, I think what we all try to focus on is the bottom line. You know, what is our health and how are we doing? We're coming into the last quarter. So it's getting near to forecasting how we'll do for the year. And we've been, it's a very different experience this year because of COVID, the much reduced activities, et cetera. And unlike some libraries, we were able to retain the staff fully through this time. And hopefully, we'll continue to open and grow and get back to normal in the next year. But I could just say what I do. I've done a cheat sheet. I didn't send it to you, Brianna. I didn't know you were coming, but I think I sent it to everybody else. Where I just look at where, because any one thing you look at is influenced by other things. So for example, in September's revenue, actual is $381,000. Our budget is $421,772. We have a variance of $40,000 in revenue. In our expenses, we have $122,845 actual. Our budget is $113,000. So we've overspent on expenditures. We've not done as well on revenue. So the net for the month, looking at the monthly figure, is minus $49,967. However, our performance year to date has been wonderful, really. Our actual revenue is under by $44,429. But we had whole and important activities that were eliminated. A CDTA contract, for example, because we're not selling those things at the hospital. The library wasn't open to do it. So although we're off $44,000 in revenue for the year, our expenses are under by $84,000. So all in all, plus and minus, where are we on our line, our profit line? We're ahead by $40,000 above budget. And we've been doing very well with the tax collections that were awarded to the city. And that's somewhat beyond our control. You know, it's contractual, so it depends on their collection of taxes. And but it begins to look pretty clearly that we're going to have a profitable year. We'll be in the black. So we've begun to spend more money. We're authorizing more expenditures for materials that we cut back on. So that's my assessment of the performance this month. I wonder if you have any comments, Paul? If that's too general or you want to be more specific in any particular thing?
Well, Bob, I always kind of look at the yearly, you know, where we are overall. And if you look at the report, we actually have $274,472 above income over expenses. So we have a positive balance of $274,000. Basically because the tax levy income is on target. And matter of fact, we were only $16,000 short. And this past week, we received another check for over $7,000. So we're really under $10,000 short. And as you recalled, $10,000 is what I always budget for uncollected taxes. We're doing very well in that, in that category. Many of the other categories, income wise, are down, but they don't have corresponding expenses since they're mostly have to do with grant income and that sort of thing. And we don't do the program if we don't get the income. So yes, we are very well, we're doing very well financially and pretty stable.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments about the September financial statement?
Derek, Leanna?
Yes.
Do either of you have questions?
I don't.
Me neither.
Are we ready to move to the second item?
Sounds like it.
Okay. So the review and authorized expenditures that's been distributed. And the total expenditures are $37,955,097 cents. And the only thing that caught my attention in a positive way was the conference. We've spent $1,291 on a New York Library Association conference. And I think enriching the staff's experience in any way is ideal. Was that for several people or one person attending the conference?
That's for most of our professional staff. I don't know, how many, Joy, how many, we got signed up?
11.
11, yes. That's for 11.
Wonderful. That's very nice. Does anyone have any question of any of the expenses?
I was curious which boiler was maintained.
The main, its main library.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, then, if we can, we'll, I'd like to just pass this in our meeting, and then we'll bring it to the board for their approval of the expenditures. So somebody want to make a motion for $37,955?
Also move.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Was that you, Brianna? I'm hard to hear. It's hard on Zoom to know who the second was.
It was Evelyn.
Okay, very good. All right.
I thought it was me.
No, no, no. It was Evelyn, but it's fine. I also second.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I got a low battery message on my computer. I'm glad I needed electric source. Okay.
If I may, Bob, if I may.
Yes.
No offense to either of our two new, and congratulations to both of you on your election. But until you actually take the oath of office, you can't vote.
Oh, well, aren't you?
I'm a process person. I am utterly a process person.
Good to know.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you, too.
I appreciate it, I really do. I don't like to make mistakes. That was good. Thank you for catching that.
It wasn't a mistake. It's just like, hello.
So then that did pass, even though?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody opposed to that motion? Okay, thank you. The auditor RFP in response. Every five years, we need to, by policy, change auditors. We'll see our auditor at the board meeting. It's an annual audit of 2019. And we're contracting for an auditor for 2020, our current year. And it's important that we have an auditor. So we did an RFP, a request for proposal in some detail, and we sent it to six known accounting firms. And we only received one reply back. Five of the six, or four of the six notified us that they would not be responding in one way or another, phone calls or whatever. So then left out, Bonadillo is a known accounting firm that does a lot of work in government and large organizations, many of them public funded, and they're very well known. They're Rochester based, but they've grown enormously. And Friday, at the close of business, I left a voicemail saying we had not heard from them, and it was the deadline was, I was a little disappointed. I got a message back from a VP saying, "We didn't submit because it was a one-year offer, and we only submit for three years." So I texted him back, and I said, "Well, other people questioned that. We would have accepted a bid had you given one for evaluation or contacted us and discussed it." But anyway, so we have one bid. And it's a comprehensive bid. They also do auditing of library system. And they have, it's a very good wholesome response. So I've distributed that to some of you, and we'll distribute it to everybody if you like. And the problem is this, that we need to have an auditor. It's a rather expensive proposal, but it's a local firm that is now international. And it's, to me, it was a very good proposal. So we are having them in a Zoom meeting on Monday at 3:30. And I had invited Jerry, Marie, myself. Michelle, our secretary, is not available. And she suggested that we go ahead without her, cost Paul and Joy to review them. And then I, and then I'm also inviting Evelyn, and I've sent her the proposal as well. So Michael Lipshultz is a partner or VP or partner, and will be available at 3:30. And we're setting up the Zoom and Jerry as well. So he had said, if you have any specific questions that you'd like to forward to him prior to Monday, he'd be very happy for that. So I did an email with some general things that I said. But if you would channel them to me, I'd appreciate it, and I'd keep him informed of anything. My sense is that most of the questions will probably be from the staff as they would want to know exactly what their style is and how they conduct the audit, et cetera. So that's what we're planning to do. And the alternative would be to restart the process to get a proposal from Bonadillo. It's my opinion that they would both be in the same range. They both seem to be as competent. But this group was more responsive, which I think is important. At least the one other firm that asked whether we'd consider a three-year at least responded to us. And so Bonadillo is very large. Both firms have similar services, including a branch for consultation if needed. So is there any question about this? The audits happen after the year is closed, and they verify our financials generally within the first six months. And you'll see what the audit is about because you'll hear the 2019 momentarily in the next meeting. Any questions about the process of the RFP?
Yeah, I can, Paul.
Yes, Jerry.
So we hire a different auditor every year?
No, we've hired, we need to hire a different auditor every five years.
Five years, okay.
We put out a proposal that encourages a response for a year. And one of the things I'm going to do is leave in the file a recommendation about our RFP. One, getting it out earlier in the year might have helped because in this situation would give us more choice. And two is, we should do it a minimum of three years because that's becoming the industry standard for desirable respondents.
That was going to be my next question. Why don't we do a three-year?
Yeah. Live and learn. If I had known that, I would have wanted it to be three years. We base the RFP on the prior RFP done six years ago. And we use that as our reference. We made some changes to it to make it more current. And I did have somebody look at it, and Paul and I met, and probably twice, I think, Paul. But, you know, we took a lot of care with the RFP. And it's a process where you need to be fair. You can't be discriminatory with the public money. Paul, do you have anything to add about my report on the audit?
No, not really, Bob. I just, it's kind of interesting because you know why I used to be Urbach, Conne, Worland, and they were our auditors years ago.
Yes.
That was quite a while ago. Yes, it's a very good firm, and, you know, I'm sure they do a great job.
Yes. They also audit Russell Sage, so they won't have far to walk at the same time.
Yeah.
So who used to be Urbach, Conne, Worland, Bonadillo?
UHY.
UHY, okay. And we can't hire, you have to hire a different auditor after five years? It has to be a different firm?
Yes. The reason for a different firm is part of what they provide you is the security of an outside eye.
Right, right.
And so if you use the same for a long period, if they are missing something, they're not going to discover anything new. And I think it might be nice to get a different point of view anyway. But we'll see. We'll see how that goes. All right. If I could just move on to the budget adoption. We talked about our budget. It's been presented. It was posted. It was voted on by the public. And what I tried to do is, this form that's posted in the Dropbox, I took the 20 budget and paired it next to the 21. So if you get a sense of changes in the budget and the direction. And because we did well this year, we were not forced to be, reach some goals or reduction, et cetera. But so we set it up, the 20 and the 21 side by side with a percent difference and a dollar difference in the areas. And it's the same format. And I think overall, you would have to say there's not significant changes to the way that we're doing the budget. There's not any particularly new directions. We were successful in getting more tax support. And what we've been mindful of and took some actions this year was trying to keep our staff at a par with their peers in the industry so that we don't lose staff to, for financial reasons. So we took some actions this year that we feel good about, and hopefully, they will too. So this is just for your reference. And so we see a 1% difference in total expenses and 1% difference in revenue. And in different areas, it swings back and forth. The special services, 6% increase. And the materials. I'm sorry. I'll turn that off before the board meeting. So that's, that's 2021 budget. We'd like, I would like to present it to the board as, for their adoption, to make it a formal process of board concurrence with the budget that was created. Again, Paul, do you have anything to add to my presentation or comments on the budget?
I'm confused. We expect to vote on the 21 budget today? I thought we were.
That's what I thought the agenda was, yes.
No, that's not on the agenda. Approving the 2021 budget is not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is review of the 2020 budget. Because remember, at the Finance Committee meeting, we recommended that we restore the book and materials budget. So that would have to be voted on by the full board.
Okay, then that is incorporated in the 2020 that's presented in this form, is it not?
Yeah, that's on the agenda as the 2020 budget.
Okay.
But we voted on that at the last Finance Committee meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Specifically putting back the materials budget to the former amount.
Right. Now, okay, probably I would have a discussion when you're off to the, because the 2020 budget was never really abandoned. We didn't follow all of it in the urgency of the COVID cutbacks, and we made proposals not to spend in specific areas, but we never changed the budget. The 2020 budget has stood from the time it was approved early in the year before that. So the motion to bring spending up to normal, we were happy to do it to the board, but it wouldn't necessarily change the budget. The figures stayed the same.
The decision of the board was that they didn't want to see the budget changed?
Yes.
To reflect the decision to restrict the materials budget?
Right.
To provide for the 10% decrease that we were concerned we might have to?
Right.
Handle. So this would be to approve on restricting it and allowing expenditures?
Okay.
Up to that amount.
To finalize a conversation about modified or reduction? To finalize that we're not doing that, that we're staying on the budget that's passed?
To, no, because we, it's not so much that we are finalizing the budget. It's that we voted to restrict those funds and not allow spending of that extra amount. And now, in Finance Committee that was held previously, we voted to allow expenditure of the materials budget, not the, you know, the original materials budget.
We're lifting the restrictions that were placed.
On the materials budget, yes. Not on the other areas.
All right. All right.
Yes.
It's time. Yes, Evelyn?
To you and also to Marie in particular. One of the things that, you know, came up is, Marie, you're saying that we did not actually pass the budget, the 2021 budgets that went before the public. And that's, I believe, one of our responsibilities and requirements included in our bylaws. Are we not going to be passing that?
We are, but we need the opportunity for discussion, and we have an awful lot on our plates for today. So, and also, when we tried to discuss it at the last Special Finance Committee, not, all the information wasn't necessarily accessible to everybody. So we postponed discussing it to be scheduled for another special finance.
Okay. We were supposed to do that by August. And to be honest, it must have slipped me because I thought with all our discussion and when we passed the tax levy, I thought we actually passed that, that tax levy. Though I'm still at the what stage, but it's something that we really need to do. We're a little behind.
I agree with you, but I think part of the reason that it was not passed at the usual time was the uncertainty that we were looking at and, and we felt that we would be better able to make a decision once we had more information. And, you know, it's substantially later than August now, so.
Yes, it is.
But I don't think there's a particular deadline by which it has to be passed. I may be wrong. I think we just are told that it has to be passed.
And I thought in our bylaws, we say by the August meeting, unless you want to look at it very, it's with that hair of saying that it needs to be submitted for approval. It doesn't say we actually have to approve it. But I always interpret it as we approve.
On the trustee's manual says that the?
Looking at our bylaws, not the?
I know, but I don't know. I can't say what our bylaws say. But I can tell you that the trustee's manual says that the board has to approve the budget.
Yeah, I think what it actually says is that "The final budget for the subsequent calendar year shall be presented for approval no later than the regular meeting in August." And I know you're a part of that refresh of the budget, I mean, of our bylaws. But you're, you know, if you want to, again, the splitting of the hair, it says presented for approval. It doesn't say it has to be approved. It's just that implication. But that's something we want, may want to look at at some future date.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't looked at the, what the bylaws specifically say.
Well, I just read it.
I had, I had looked at the trustees.
What I would like to propose is that we close the finance meeting so that we can open the board meeting and if necessary, have, continue this discussion. But I think we've resolved it. So I would.
Sounds like a good idea.
Is there any objection to adjourning, adjourning this meeting? All right, meeting adjourned, and I would close the meeting, and we'll continue with our regular board meeting.
Okay, we're waiting for a couple of people here. Are we waiting for one person? How many people are?
We're at 12 participants?
We got everybody.
I'm sorry, I can't see who's with us.
Yeah, we. If you click on participants, you'll get a list on your right side.
Just, yeah, I've just found this. Okay. Okay.
I don't know who Glimmer Rick is, but.
That's me.
Oh, good.
Probably. Glimmer TC.
Okay, is there any public comment? As we open the October 13th board meeting? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report and Approval of Expenditures.
All right, so the report that you would like is our report on the September review to start with. Is that correct? Marie, I don't want to begin to give a report and have you tell me that that's not what you're expecting.
I'm I'm sorry. What was your question, Bob?
I said to you, the report that you're expecting is a review of what we just did, the review of the September statement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Under to the meeting we just came from, but we are doing well fiscally. And we are $40,000 ahead of our budget and expectations. It's been a, it's been an odd year with the reduction of services and COVID. But what has remained true for us has been the consistency with the tax levy. And we're receiving more money than we had budgeted for, it appears. And with $40,000 ahead of our performance on bottom line, we're increasingly confident that we'll get to the end of the year whole. And so we began to authorize additional expenditures back to our original budget. And we continue to do so. The expenses are being managed well. And overall, we're seeing a comfortable year in terms of performance without concern. There is, we would like to propose going back to full, fuller expenditures in our materials. Because that's what the library is all about. And we have the means to do so without endangering our fiscal performance. So I'd like to propose that we authorize material expenditures in line with and not to exceed the 2020 budget.
I would second that.
Thank you, Kirsten. All right, let's have a vote. It's probably easier in Zoom to, is there anyone abstaining? Do we have any negative votes? All right, so let me just call for the the cackle. You can't understand. Everybody in favor, please say aye.
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 That's very good.
Hey, Bob, can you repeat the authorizing expenditures?
Yes. The proposal was to authorize expenditures in the materials section up to and not to exceed the approved budget of 2020. That doesn't mean we'll spend it all, but it gives us authorization to do so if we're able to do some catch up. And Paul will spread that out over the the next two months to make sure that we're staying on track. That was discussed at the last meeting. So that's that's what the proposal is. Is that sufficient?
Yep, I got it. I just wanted to make sure I had it ordered correctly.
Okay. And the the second thing I need to do is get our ask for your authorizing expenditures. They've been distributed. Total expenditures are $337,955.97. And these are basic expenses. There are no unusual expenses. They're all routine. And that's the large amount. So I would propose to the board that we authorize the expenditures to be paid in that amount, $37,955.97.
I second it.
We get.
I second.
Okay, the second, good. And Marie, you would call a vote, yes?
You muted, Marie.
I'm sorry, Marie, you've been muted, so we didn't hear what.
I know. I was trying to figure out which computer I had to unmute. So and is anyone abstaining from the vote on approving the expenditures? Any no votes? All those in favor?
Aye.
The vote carries. Expenditures are approved.
And just a quick update to the board. We did have one response to our RFP to select an auditor. We've set up a committee meeting for Monday at 3:30 to meet with that auditor and on Zoom and have a discussion and then hopefully we can come forward with a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. The next item is swearing in of the new board members. Paul, are you going to handle that or?
Oh, we, yeah, I was wondering how we're going to do that.
Well, yeah, this is a real question. We never did this before, so I have no idea. I put the the oath of office in the Dropbox. So everybody probably has a copy, maybe. I might have a copy here too, even.
I didn't have anything out, and I can't open my Dropbox while Zoom is on for some reason.
Yeah, either the president or the secretary usually administers the oath.
I thought it's usually the secretary.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I mean, I can easily do Brianna, like literally over our back fence.
No, I think he's suggesting tonight that you administer.
Yeah, well, I technically can do that. I mean, I can do it, but doesn't somebody have to sign it?
Yeah, but first of all, do you have a copy of the oath?
Well, I do because it's in the Dropbox.
Yes, it's in the Dropbox.
If you read it, they just repeat it.
Yeah.
That's all we ever did. You read it.
Well, there's a name, a signature, and then I sign it. There's signatures required.
Can we do a written copy to follow?
Yeah, you can sign it later.
Yeah.
Well. It's just repeating it now, and that.
Right, we can do that, but there is, should, should be a process of how it's gonna, what's.
Hold, please, for a minute. Here's, here's the thing. You're taking an oath of office. It's going to be in the minutes. So the fact that you have taken the oath of office is perfectly legal as far as I can see. Eventually, what we do is we file a copy with the county clerk. So however we can figure out how to sign this, there's no big hurry here. You know, if you can get it to me and I can take it over to the county clerk, that's fine. If we can do digital signatures, if we could send it back and forth a couple of times, that's fine. I guess whatever works. If we have to actually carry it in here, I guess we have to do that. But there's no, there's no big hurry here.
Um, now, Michelle has said that she can do the signature with Brianna. I can do the signature with Jerry.
Okay.
And that would take care of the signature part, right? If they swear their oath of office tonight.
Yeah, because, okay, each candidate has to sign it and then.
An officer has to.
The secretary usually signs the box.
Right, but it can be the president.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. So does that, are people in agreement to that? And that way they'll be able to vote tonight, which is good because otherwise we might have difficulty on some of the votes.
Okay, so do you want me to administer it now?
Yeah, just, yeah, administer it to each.
Okay. Do, do you guys have copies of it? Jerry, do you have a copy?
No, I can't bring it up. I.
Okay.
Joy, can you share it on your screen?
Sure, I can do that. Give me one second.
So people can see.
I don't remember. Do I do this like wedding vows? Like say it first? Is this? Yep.
Repeat after me, yes?
Yeah, so repeat after me. Yep.
We don't have to see it if, then if you just, we just repeat to you.
All right. So we're ready to start?
I think so.
All right, I'll start with you, Brianna, because I know you have it right in front of you. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of New York, of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Trustee of the Troy Public Library.
The duties of the Office of Trustee of the Troy Public Library.
Welcome to the club.
Thanks.
And now, Jerry, are you ready?
Yeah.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the Office of Trustee of the Troy Public Library.
The duties of the Office of Trustee of the Troy Public Library.
Thank you. Okay, so then I will make sure that Marie, if you want to print yours out.
I already did.
Okay, sign it, and then I'll, if you sign it, and I'll get it. I can, I can scan it and email it, right? Paul, it'll be fine?
Wouldn't it be better to have the original? Since it's a, you know, an oath of office.
I will stick it in.
I mean, it could always be popped in the mail, too.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I'll stick it in the mail.
So we lost Paul?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess we did.
And Maria, go work with Jerry to get the.
Yes. I will. Okay, while Paul's gone, now that you're both sworn in and can vote, I'm going to go back to this.
Supreme Court now.
I'm going to go back to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to see anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, is there a second on the consent agenda? Bob, did you second? Yes, he did. Anyone against? Anyone abstaining? All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Almost everything.
The next item is the 2019 audit. This is Victor here with us tonight. And Victor, we have a long agenda, just so you know, but we do have a couple of new people who may have questions.
Okay, so we will try to be concise. I know based upon interaction, some of the, some of the dialogues on the audit have gotten lengthy. So I'll let you be the guide of that. From the standpoint of reviewing the audit, the summary of auditor's results are a unmodified opinion on the audit as a whole, and nothing noted on the report on internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations that needed to be brought forward. There is a management letter, a separate management letter document. Now, the draft was sent out the end of last week, and I'm of the impression it was sent to board members and the new board members as well. So if there's something you don't have or don't understand, let me know. The auditor's report is on page one. Page one is not at the beginning of the document because we have the Management Discussion Analysis, which is in Roman numerals, that is in the report form prior to that. But once you get to the number pages, page one and two is the auditor's report. As I said, that is unmodified, meaning clean opinion. And then on page 26 is where the Compliance with Laws and Regulations Report is. And again, there was nothing that needed to be noted in there. Management Letter is a second document. There were only follow up items. I'd like to defer the dialogue on that a little bit as part of the discussion just so I can hit on what are usually considered significant items in any audit of a local governmental entity. The, there is a stewardship footnote that is in the audit report. What the stewardship footnote does is it looks at your budget for the year being audited, explains if there are any increases and or decreases in that budget. Again, this is for 2019. That footnote is on page 20 to 21 of the footnotes in the audit report, and it's note three. There was nothing specific. There was no changes in the budget this year. I think that is your customary methodology as you were dialoguing, as I got in on the tail end of the Finance Committee, is that if you're looking for cost controls, what you're doing is is maybe suspending, spending, but not actually reducing your budget. And that is echoed by what's in the 2019 audit as well. Then there are mandatory statements in the audit report that compare the revenues and expenses actual for the year to the budget for the year. And those are back on pages 24 and 25. There, let's get as far back as I wanted to. Revenues were in excess of budget for the year. Primarily, that was two large sources, one of those being a state source in 2019 of approximately $200,000 in total. And that was more than budgeted and more than what you had in the prior year as well. Miscellaneous revenues were also higher than budgeted and actually higher than what they were, the, excuse me, no, those were a little bit less than what they were the prior year in 2019. So all in all, the revenue side of the budget, your revenues exceeded budget by $314,000 and change. On the expenditure side of the budget, the expenses under Culture and Recreation, which is a term used in the uniform system of accounts or where libraries sit in this system as put out by the Office of the State Controller, that was overspent by $132,000 and change. But that was, that correlates to that higher state revenue is our understanding from going through the audit process for the current year. So just as a note, that does show up in the stewardship footnote as having overspent Culture and Recreation. You had the revenue source to do it. The recommendation for future years, if if a similar circumstance exists is that the board would come back and when it accepts or acknowledges receipt of revenues higher than budgeted originally and they are for a specific purpose, that you might want to come with a budget amendment for that special purpose revenue and for the use of which it was intended. And and that would alleviate this, and you do usually, unless your attorney would tell you otherwise, you do usually have the authority to. unless your attorney would tell you otherwise, you do usually have the authority to accept revenues for, for specific purposes and correspondingly identify what expenses they would also encompass. I said a mouthful there. Any, any questions on that piece so far? Okay. Other notes of interest in a governmental audit is to ensure that your deposits are collateralized by the bank. And that is necessary whenever your deposits with the bank, a specific bank or an individual bank exceed $250,000. You do receive FDIC insurance, federal deposit insurance coverage for $250,000 in non-interest-bearing accounts. And you do receive as a governmental entity, another $250,000 in non-interest-bearing accounts. To be, to be honest, it's a little gray with interest rates so low as to what is designated as, as an interest-bearing or a non-interest-bearing account. And the sum of this is, is that you do have proper collateral from the bank covering all of your funds. So it's not an issue. That is a required disclosure that also exists in the stewardship note. No question, okay. The financial highlights really exist in the Management Discussion and Analysis, which is in front of the auditor's opinion. It is, is intended to be and is a, the client document, so it's the library document. That does give you a comparison year over year of 2019 to 2018. And there's some interesting information in there. It does give the library the opportunity to enhance certain highlights that have occurred from year to year. Like any governmental entity, even though you really have only one operating fund, there is a difference between your fund accounting and your entity-wide accounting. And one of the things brought up in the highlights is that the things that are added to the entity-wide are your fixed assets. And then you depreciate those fixed assets. And what also is added in there is any long-term debts that are not expected to be paid within the next year. And in your case, that really just is one item in particular. And that item is related to long-term compensated absences where your employees earn certain dollar amounts for unused sick time and in some cases vacation time for some entities. And that's about a $35,000 and change liability at the end of 2019. And that fixed asset number was just shy of three quarters of a million dollars of your net depreciated building and equipment. So those are two significant items that get added. And one of the financial highlights I was looking to, to just walk through is that you do have a positive fund balance position at December 31, 2019 of 641,000 and change, and that's your fund basis. And it's even higher than that for entity-wide basis because of the fixed assets being three quarters of a million dollars almost and your liabilities being a modest amount of 35,000. So you're adding $700,000 to your equity position for your overall entity-wide financial statements. So you're, on your entity-wide financial statements, you're, you have a positive fund balance of just shy of 1.4 million dollars. So that's usually a big highlight that is, is really more specific to you and your, your type of local government, the library. Because you don't have some of the obligations that a lot of other governmental entities end up with at this point in time, depending upon collective bargaining agreements that they're generating costs for retirees' health insurance that you don't have and state, either state pension funds or other private pension funds, which again, you don't have anything significant in those areas. So I've, I've covered in a big picture, the fund basis of accounting, you have a positive position. The entity-wide, where your positive position is even higher. I talked about your revenues being above budget for last year, 2019, and again, a big chunk of that was 200 and some thousand dollars from the state. And I talked about in correlation with that, you did have higher spending, a lot of it for supplies and, and upkeep pipe items that as I recall, were directly related to that supplemental funding from the state. So the last item to cover from this standpoint before we get to questions is the management letter. The management letter is all follow-up items. And there was, there were two drafts on that, only from the standpoint that based upon the delivery of last year's report, corrective action was taken in the beginning of 2020, even on the 2019. So there was actually corrective action taking with respect to the management letter items in the current year, 2020. And that relates to, one of the first items was depositing cash on a timely basis. And in the beginning of 2020, the library implemented certain procedures. So we did not look at those as part of the 2019 audit because they were subsequent events. But we understand and we therefore are acknowledging that those will have a definite positive impact on those management letter comments as it relates to timely deposits of cash receipts. And then the second area that where that was true was related to monthly reconciliations. And in the case of the monthly reconciliations, having those, oh, I'm sorry, not the monthly reconciliations, the journal entries. Because we were looking for supporting documentation for, for journal entries and looking for proper authorizations. And the procedures were implemented again in 2020 to address that. As some of that was related to the Lanningburg location. So there were procedures that were added in the beginning of 2020 to address that. One of the other prior management letter items was related to adopting a capitalization threshold. The library had not per se established in prior years a capitalization threshold for governmental entities. We would suggest something higher than what's in the Office of the State Controller's safekeeping manuals. It doesn't change your safekeeping requirement. This is just for entity-wide financial reporting purposes. You still want to have your insurance coverage at an appropriate level so you're not exposing your risk too much. And therefore, maybe what you're doing is insuring things of 200, $250 or more. But for that same similar type of equipment for fixed assets and financial reporting purposes on an entity-wide basis, you probably want a much higher threshold purely from the standpoint that your, your biggest asset is your buildings. And those are going to be captured one way or the other, even if you, even if you were to use a five or $10,000 threshold, your buildings are your, are your biggest asset. You will be capturing 80% or maybe even 90% of your total assets by adopting a threshold. I think one of the things we had been following is also related to the capital asset listing and taking a, a physical count of the fixed assets. And at least through 2019, that had not occurred, so we would recommend that that be monitored in the future going forward. And that could be done for the big picture items as well, to make sure that what's on the list is still there. And that does cover the four items that are all carryover items from prior management letter. There was nothing new added in the current management letter. So then we can move to questions. Or if there was anything else that Joy wanted brought forward or that Paul wanted brought forward in the administration we worked through, we accomplished the audit.
Bob?
I had a question on the, in the management instruction. And I didn't learn until today that one of the steps to remedy or address the comment was that we'll make daily deposits into the bank. And I, it just surprised me. When I first came, when we were fully operational, we had CDTA transportation sales, which amounted to quite a bit of money. And so the need for careful management was very important. And the response that we'll make a deposit every day. Now that CDTA, it will be coming back online now, but we have few people in libraries. They won't be at those levels. And I thought the,
I'm not playing with words, but I don't think the terminology says daily deposits.
Pardon?
I'm not playing with words, but I didn't think that the explanation we received, nor did I think the wording we used in here said daily deposits.
That, that's what I read today. Paul, can you clarify that? Are you not, did you not?
I think we were talking about daily reporting and daily tallies of cash receipts. That doesn't mean you're taking it to the bank every day. Was there something more to that?
I understand.
Paul?
Yeah, we have changed so that we've increased the number of deposits. There are times when there's enough cash, you make a daily deposit. But you know, we, we had, there'd been a a week or so before, you know, between deposits, so we speeded that up considerably. So that, yeah, if there's a lot of cash involved, we do make a daily deposit.
Yes, I think that if we did it on, on a cash, either we could set some limits and certainly don't want to accumulate money, but we have a safe that is very secure. And when I read the corrective note, it said daily deposit, just.
No, it says, it actually says, I have it in front of me. It says counted daily, but deposited in a timely manner. It, it doesn't say deposited, it said, we recommend that the cash drawers at both circulation desks be counted daily and that a deposit slip is prepared on, on a daily basis. So deposit, a deposit slip prepared. So basically, we needed better documentation of, daily documentation of what we were.
Okay, so the, the daily deposits are into our safe, not, not going out to the bank.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
I would encourage that because part of that process of preparing, if you can do it daily, part of that process is preparing the deposit slip. Is that you have restrictively endorsed the checks, if there are checks. And you have identified with a bank document that you're looking to deposit what cash resources there are. So it's, it's not something that is easily altered down the road. So it completes the documentation process. What a lot of organizations will do is try to restrict themselves where they get to the bank within at least five days. So that things are not three to five days. It depends upon the organization and that, and that's local governments as well. And certainly it's a function as to how close you physically are to the bank you're doing business and, and under these circumstances, whether the bank has restrictive, restricted opening hours still or not. I think a lot of them have opened back up, but I think we all ran in over the last four months or so where that, it was not as easy to accomplishing the banking in person unless you had an depository situation.
Anything else? Does anybody else have questions? So Victor, when you said fixed asset threshold, is that the deductible? That one refers to an insurance?
No, they're actually, those are actually two different things. For your entity-wide financial statements, you're required to depreciate your fixed, your fixed assets, the bricks, sticks, larger valued equipment. But part of determining that larger valued equipment, is it going to be $250, $500, $1,000, or maybe even higher? And, and the difference is you have in your order report, because you're a governmental entity, you actually have two separate opinions in here. That's not truly obvious, but your operating fund is on a governmental fund basis and there's an opinion on that. And there's also an opinion on your entity-wide financial statements, which is a full accrual basis. It only becomes obvious that there's multiple opinions if the opinion is different on one of those methods of accounting. Where they're the same, it's blended into one opinion paragraph. When it's different opinions, then that paragraph gets broken down and is stated what the opinion is on each, each area. For example, you could have a clean opinion on your general fund and not even recording, not recording something on your entity-wide financial statements and therefore have a modified opinion on your entity-wide financial statement. Maybe there's a large liability that you have to have an actuarial calculation for. And it's, it's difficult to afford paying an actuary every year. That's not going to impact your general fund. Your general fund could still end up with a clean opinion. But it gives the opportunity for the auditor to segregate those two things so that you can see you have a clean opinion on your general fund. And you have a modified opinion or potentially even worse on your entity-wide financial statements. The, the deductible comes into your safekeeping concept, which is still something that's looked at for audit purposes. We would not want to see most local government entities do increase their deductible to a dollar amount where it is difficult for them to replace equipment. Now, two identical profits or libraries could have two different thresholds for that. If one library has set up a property loss reserve and they've got thousands and thousands of dollars in the property loss reserve, I would expect that they probably are going to use a larger deductible with their insurance policies. Because they've already got a reserve set aside, they can afford to pay some of those deductibles out of versus an entity that doesn't have a property loss reserve. They would have to take any of those deductibles out of operating cash. So similar sized entities, depending upon their financial structure, could put, put themselves in a position of having two different deductibles. And obviously, the one with the larger deductible is going to save more money on their premium on an annual basis.
Okay. I also want to make sure you have no new recommendations for this audit year. Only the ones from last year that hadn't been.
Correct.
And one other question that arose that we were uncertain about, Paul recently gave us some information that indicated that we have a credit line. And that it's old. Are we allowed as a special district library to have a credit line? I thought we couldn't borrow.
No, we're not, we're not allowed to use a credit line. It's on, it continues to be on our balance sheet. Apparently, it started off on our balance sheet as an asset. Right now, we don't, we're assuming that it's closed, but that's just an assumption. I haven't checked with HSBC, that's the bank that it was through originally, but it still shows up on our balance sheet.
Okay, thank you.
We need, we need an adjustment to that.
Okay, great. And last, lastly, Victor? Were you going to say something?
I was just going to show that I don't believe it was confirmed by any of the financial institutions that you had an outstanding line of credit.
I don't, I don't remember seeing it in your audit.
Because it's not, that's not a bank that you're currently authorized to do business with, I don't believe. I see Pioneer and I see KeyBank.
That goes back before the district was formed. Credit as an association, but we're not allowed to have one as a district library.
Patty did give me an adjusting journal entry for that so that it will be cleared, but since we don't, you know, it won't show in the, since we don't technically have that, is what she said.
It's not on the order report, it's just an account that's still existing in the detail ledger.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and lastly, have all the trustees submitted their feedback? Do you know? Because I was heard that, that would be needed for finalization.
That will be, we'll need to make sure we have the advantage of doing this virtually. Because I'm sitting here with the audit file open. It says I already have that open. Let's see. And I'd review these. I believe there is still a number of trustees. Now, some of them may be last year's trustees that as of September 2020 are no longer trustees, but it looks like we still have a number that. are no longer trustees, but it looks like we still have a number that either the responses just came in and we haven't got into the audit file. We have one resigned, as noted as resigned. And I know we're hearing half a dozen responses that maybe not all of them have gotten on the checklist, but we sent out, we sent out nine, and let's knock that down to eight because we do have an indication of a resignation by Marie. Yvazna.
I haven't resigned.
Why does that say resigned? I have to check with my client, with my staff on that, check with Patty.
Yeah.
Did someone resign it? Maybe got on the wrong line?
I think, you may be referring to Cheryl Kennedy.
Cheryl Kennedy is one line up from you on the control sheet.
That's, yeah, that must be what happened.
If you could let us know whether anybody, you know, we need to follow up. Some people weren't sure, and I don't have a new, a blank.
Okay.
To give them.
And we can, okay. We can send those as a package to either Joy or Paul, or both, they'll be electronic copies.
Okay. Thank you. How about anybody else? Does anybody else have questions? Or Victor? Bob, anything?
No. I was curious about the fees. They seem to have increased this year. Is that due to additional consultation? Or I'm not sure why.
Yes, we did have Patty come and consult on some of the recommendations that were put on. So she did come at the end of December 2019, so we can meet in. For 2020.
Okay, it sounds like that. Victor, thank you.
And I think, I think part of it was just a timing because we're wrapping up right now in 2020. The prior year audit was wrapped up late in 2019 or the first month of 2020, so it might have been a lap as to when that final bill went out. So part of that bill in 2020 might have actually been from the 2018 audit.
Okay.
There's a piece of that too, because obviously, we wouldn't have gotten it billed until reports were discussed with the board. So some of it might have just been timing as well.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
And it's not snowing tonight.
It is not snowing. It is raining wherever we are, though. At least we have some here.
That's good.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the nominating committee.
I wonder, Maria, if we could skip to Virginia at this point? Is that something?
Is that agreeable to everybody?
Sure.
Okay. Virginia, hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my job tonight is to just introduce myself to those, I know Brianna and Jerry, I met you in the library, but also introduce you to my department as well and what, what we do and kind of give you an overview and a chance to ask questions if you have any. So I run the circulation department at the main library. It is our largest department. Our staff is what you would call the frontline staff. So everybody that you see at the checkout desk is from the circulation department and any of the pages that you see putting away books as well. So the biggest function of our department is customer service. We do so many other things, but they always get chalked up to customer service. So everything from opening and closing the building, making sure things are secure. We do patron registrations. Anything, any questions you have about your library account would be answered through us. Checking out or in materials. We do the paging list, which is where we go and take items off the shelves that people have requested and make them available either on our hold shelf or sending them out in the library's delivery system so that they can be filled at other libraries as well. We also sort the incoming deliveries, so anything, all of our materials that are returned at other libraries or requests for our patrons from other libraries as well. We have a whole array of miscellaneous things that we do, from shelf checks in projects with inventory to navigator passes and, you know, in typical times, the restrooms and selling merchandise and collaborating with other departments. The fun fact is that in all years except this year, the staff usually sponsor a trick or treat for residents. We encourage kids to come in and trick or treat with us as a safe community place, and that's completely staff-sponsored that we run through our department. There's just so many smaller things that we do. We're the one, you know, we answering, answering phones and helping people if they have call numbers, getting their items back on the shelf so that they can be checked out again. I think it's almost impossible to tell you everything that we do in a day because it changes every day. We are not in typical times, so at this time, we are also doing curbside service. All of the quarantine materials comes through us. We handle everything to do with that. Pat, feel free to jump in if I'm forgetting something important, but every single one of those tasks all come back to customer service. And that is the key for our department is we just want to provide the best possible customer service within our rules and regulations and at this time with safety in mind for everybody.
I wonder, Virginia, if we could talk a little bit about the impact that the pandemic has had on circulation? For example, the whole quarantine.
Yes. Our quarantine process, we now currently are quarantining all returned items for four days. So everything has to go into our outside book drop as opposed to either outside or inside. Now they have to, everything has to go in the outside receptacle. The staff then have to dawn the PPE, and then we have to take our cart with our bins and we have to go outside. We have to empty everything into the bins. And then we have to take the items upstairs into our quarantine space, which is the art gallery, the former, former computer lab. And those materials have to then sit there for four days before we can open them and check everything in. That impact, there's, there's a lot of impact for the staff and patrons. The patrons, there's a lot of confusion about, hey, I returned this. Why is it still on my account? It takes up to four days, you know, four days minimum for us to get those off their accounts. It can vary if we're closed, say, on a Monday or something like that. But that requires a lot of communication with our patrons, just making sure that we're letting people know that things will take a little longer. But we also have a higher impact on the staff as well. We are doing a lot of condensed work. So our book drop is being emptied twice a day, when typically those materials would be handled all day. So anytime we're open, we would be checking those items in. We wouldn't typically check in everything that's returned in one day at one transaction, which is currently what we're having to do. So because of safety concerns, we have our staff split and we are doing the same amount of work required with the additional COVID restrictions with less hours and less people available. So the impact on that being staff burnout and physical exhaustion, we've made changes as we go. Our new floor mats have all finally arrived, so that helps a lot. So there's, there's bigger aspects in that too. You know, the mask wearing is required. Not everybody likes that. That increases the negativity sometimes if there's a patron who is failing to comply with that request. We have a lot of cleaning to do, and now that's not just our department. Every department has the cleaning list. It has to be done twice a day, more so if needed. So there's just a lot of added things with condensed number of hours that we're, I think we're starting to get a handle on how to balance.
With the curbside, which we started out using when we, when we really started to open, there were quite a number. Is that still popular with people or is it falling off? Or what's the status?
For anyone who's not familiar, our curbside service, we have designated parking spaces in the front of the building with signage. And then we also have a table set up at the ramp entrance on Second Street for walk-ups. Patrons will call us when they're at either space and then give us their card number and we bring their items out to them. In the beginning, we were solely curbside and it was constant. As more people became aware that we were open and more people became more comfortable with procedures and safety concerns being addressed, it has dwindled. It's, I think today it was used more because of the rain and people not wanting to take their kids out of the car and that sort of thing. But for a most part, it is very insignificant at this time. But still valid to have available for those that, you know, may feel more safe to still use our services by not having to come into a public building.
Virginia, not all your books are out on the shelf, right? Don't you have, have other places that they're kept and that maybe require more effort on your part?
I'm not sure what you mean. You mean to?
Well, your DVDs aren't in the cases, right?
They are.
Oh, they are in the cases?
Yes, DVDs are in the cases. They're locking.
Okay, and what about your, your urban literature?
Right, urban fiction is double case, which that means is it's a high theft item, which our DVDs were as well. So that's what Marie was referring to, is we would have an empty case on the shelf. And then in our office, we would have the actual items. So when somebody wanted to borrow it, we would need to exchange it for the item and then we could proceed to check it out. The DVDs, we handled a significant amount of DVDs daily. So it became more cost-effective to go to locking cases, which we've done for a while. But our urban fiction is still cased that way. So there's just a plastic case with a photocopy of the cover. And then if somebody wants to borrow that, we need to exchange that for the physical item before we can proceed with the transaction.
Does anybody have any, any more questions for Virginia? I actually asked that she be the first department head to come because I thought it would be useful for the board to hear about the stress that the staff is under at this time, which is more so than usual, and the effort they put into opening our library where not many of the others hadn't been open to the public.
That's true. All of this, we have an amazing team at both locations. I can't speak, just remind. Everybody has been great in putting whatever they can forth to make sure that we can provide what services we can safely to, for both the staff and the patrons. You know, we can't go full throttle right now. It's just not appropriate. It's not safe to do that. But we are doing everything possible to give what we can at this time.
Yeah, I have a general question about the patrons. Just from your observations, how do you think the patrons are holding up and the same, experience different kinds of stress because of COVID, but certainly influenced?
Right. I can see coming into the building, I think patrons, again, from my observation, patrons are a little apprehensive, but I think it's more of, you know, they're not sure what they're supposed to do right now. Every place you go has different rules. The signs are everywhere. Which sign do you read first kind of thing? So I think 90% of the people really do just want to do things safely and still be able to do what they need to do with us. I, you know, a lot of people still choose not to come in. Again, public building, being exposed, that sort of thing. But I think for the most part, people are, they just want to be able to do the things that they need to do and still have the books and movies and things available as well. So using the computer, being able to fax and copy. I can tell you today, between 12 and 1 o'clock, the reference department was completely run ragged. There was a line constantly through the entire lobby with photocopying and computer use and faxing and just people needing to be able to do the things that they need to be able to do. So there's, I hope that answered your question, Bob, but.
It was, sure.
Yeah, people really, they just want to make sure that they're doing the right thing too. They don't want to make anybody uncomfortable. They don't want to, you know, break a rule. They don't want to be somewhere they're not supposed to be. I think there's just a lot of uncertainty and the staff really take charge of that and making sure people know where they need to go and can get the help that they need still.
Right. Thank you.
And I've seen people there who, for whom it's their third place. Even, even now during this time, they're, they're still spending time being at the library.
Yeah, I, this is my 21st year at the library, at the Tri-Hallup Library. And I can tell you, I have literally seen people grow up with us. Some people come back after college and you're like, hey, this is my wife and things like that. So yes, there are people, we are a part of their daily routine. We're a part of their life. And, you know, being able to still be able to provide that is important.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. Sorry, I'm in the dark here. My eyes are giving me a problem. I'm just wondering, you had mentioned stressed, stressful situations if people object to the masks. Do you, have you had many of those incidents and how do you handle, how do you handle that?
We have, we often have negative situations. The mask thing I brought up because it's probably the most prominent one at this time. But with any transaction, you always want, our staff, we always, you know, try to make sure everybody's approaching it in the best manner possible. You know, non-aggressive, more, you know, informative and, you know, you really just want to be able to maintain the situation in a manner that is acceptable for the situation that you're in. Each person is different. You know, if it's a group of teenagers, they can be like, guys, come on, man, you know, you have to wear a mask. You know, most of the time, adults are like, oh, man, I forgot it in the car. It's not, you know, willful. Other people are just tired of it and don't want to do it. Nothing that's ended too horribly. But you handle it any, any way you would anywhere else if they didn't have on shoes or, you know, they're, they have their phone on speaker playing their music. It's all the same thing.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Well, thank you for waiting to talk with us and, and sharing all the information you have with us.
Absolutely. You know, I always welcome a chance to address the board and to get to know you guys. So feel free to say hi to me and ask me any questions if you have them at any other time.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. So the next item, I guess, is now the nominating committee report, correct? So I'm sure Evelyn will help me with this, but the nominating committee did get together. We were grateful to have both Michelle and Bob agree to their roles again as officers. Michelle being secretary and also Bob being the treasurer. So thank you for that. Both Evelyn and I are running for the board president. So I don't know if you, you received the ballot. Did everybody receive the ballot that I emailed at about the beginning of the finance committee? I didn't want it, I was afraid people would test it. And Mark isn't here to fix it, so.
Right, that was the link that said Mark said, don't do before the meeting.
Right, exactly. And it's a good thing he said that to me because I would have. I don't know about the rest of you.
Wait, is there another one that you sent out now?
That I could send out again?
Yes, please.
I should be able to. Let's see. Sent mail.
I don't seem to have it either.
It says ballot for officers and it went out, oh, it went out about 5:24. So I will forward it again. Whoops, sorry, wrong, wrong keyboard.
Where did it go? What did you send it to?
I.
Individuals?
I don't know if this helpful, Marie, I received 5:24, the ballot for officers from you. I just opened it now.
Was that, did that go to our, our emails, our individual emails?
Yes, it did.
Okay. I haven't, I haven't figured, I have to confess, I haven't figured out this library email thing.
Well, it's, it's went to your personal email because I didn't know whether you were prepared yet to.
I'll have to have a tutorial on this library.
Well, we have, we have great technical support here at the library, especially to you Apple users that I can't help with.
I like saying if I can do that one, anyone can do it.
I just sent it again.
Nope, I, I keep going, get email and nothing's coming.
And I sent.
It's arrived.
The way to view the results to Joy. So she can report on those.
Yep.
Are there any more nominations from the floor before we proceed? For any of the offices? Okay, now we only need to use the ballot for vice president or for president. Because you only need an anonymous ballot if, if there are multiple people running for the office. So we can start with those for whom there's no competition. So Michelle, do we need somebody to nominate her, Evelyn?
Well.
Oh, she's already been nominated, but the, does the?
We made a decision, the nominating committee, let me go back so I can actually get a screen up here, this one. We did make a motion in the nominating committee, but we have to present that slate to the rest of the board.
So I think, I think I've done that and also Evelyn wanted to run for vice president as well.
Well, I want to run for president, but I am willing to take on the responsibility, no matter what the title, Marie, let's, I want to be really clear about that. It's not that I am trying to put my head on the chopping block before we even vote.
I just didn't want to leave, leave you out there from what I, I thought had been decided within the nominating. No, no aspersions or anything. Okay, so all in favor of, or is there a second on Michelle? Do we need to second? Okay, Kirsten seconds. Is there anyone against? You bet, you should be careful because you never know.
I know, no, if I change my mind, I would have let you know before then.
And does anyone abstain? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Cannot, it carries unanimously. Next is Bob. Is, does anyone want to second Bob for the treasurer? Kirsten seconds? Anyone against? Anyone abstaining? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye. Evelyn, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so. So motion, the motion carries or the vote carries. So lastly, then we have the ballot that you've received. Everybody received it now?
Yes.
Okay, so you can vote for the president's position? Assuming, do we have a, a second on that? On, I guess, both these nominations?
I second, I second both.
Thank you. So do you want to go ahead and vote?
Wanted to say a few words even?
Pardon?
Do we even want to say a few words or shall we just go?
Oh, I forgot about, yes, sorry, we will.
Well, wait, I already voted. I, maybe if you guys said something, I would have changed my mind.
I'm sorry, other people may not have voted.
Okay.
Go ahead, Evelyn.
I guess I just might go first, right?
Pardon?
We've been going through the back and forth of making comments and speeches. And I guess it is my turn to go first.
That's my recollection, recollection. I apologize for the.
The rule of primacy anyways.
I wish I could undo it, but.
That's okay. It is what it is, as will probably this election. As I said, I tried to put my head on a chopping block beforehand, but. So, since I don't consider myself oblivious or delusional, but I do have an understanding of dynamics. I debated whether or not to run for president this year. My decision was to run was determined by recent events and the belief that the board should have a choice. No matter what the outcome, I hope board members consider the following this evening and throughout the year. Yes, we have a president who is adept at pulling together grants. It's an important skill. However, this board needs a president who has a broader range of skills. Ironically, our president asked that I be the board liaison to the safety plan team as a play to my strengths. And it's those strengths that make a good president. And also ironically, and as a thank you to Marie for continuing what I had termed boot camp by asking Virginia to take part in tonight's program. So the rest of the board, as I did when you started, Marie, can understand what the different operations are in this library. But there are certain aspects I think that need to be highlighted as we think about leadership. First mission, what's the library's mission? It should be a constant question. Not everyone has the same answer. This library is more than its brick and mortar and marble. The library we govern is here to provide service to its community. The grants I refer to are wonderful, but they are building centric. The library needs to be so much more than the building. Just saying one cares about more than the building isn't enough. One needs to live the mission, understand how the library serves and how it operates. Communication, this board needs a president who communicates and communicates fully. In order to make the best decisions possible, each member should be apprised of situations and in detail. Lack of communication was never more evident than during the library shutdown. As president, I would have kept the board informed with regular and complete updates. You would also get a monthly president's report. Interpretation, consensus is the foundation of board decisions. Although I am not a strong proponent of the loyalty component of board service, there's a difference between disagreeing with a board decision and being vocal about that disagreement and reinterpreting a board decision for public consumption. The decision and the rationale for that decision needs to be related accurately and not reinterpreted to your agenda. Process, it's important to understand the legal and fiduciary responsibilities the board must carry out. For example, in picking a president, you need to think about who can lead this board to the review and implementation, implementation process of the new minimum standards at libraries that go into effect January 1st, 2021. Even with all the other issues we're dealing with, we should already be aware of the upcoming changes and already be discussing those changes. I've been an active patron since I was two here. I've been an active participant in library programs and I've immersed myself in understanding library related issues in general and all operational aspects of the library. I understand the guidelines we operate under and believe maintaining the integrity of the library is utmost. I advocate for a mission, including for our staff, both internally and with the public. I connect with our allies, including the friends and other Upper Hudson Library System members. And yes, I ask for your vote in this election.
Thank you, Evelyn, and I do truly appreciate your contributions to the board. Would hope that you continue to do so. So I don't want to repeat what I've said other years and I'm going to try to keep it brief. Last year was a hard year for the board. There were four new board members out of only a total of seven on the board. And thinking of tonight, I realized that considering their newness, how amazing their performance has been. Every trustee helped to share the load in moving the library forward. Thank you all for what you've accomplished this year. The uncertainty that we've encountered and the potential impact would be on the, be the library's ear has been very difficult. We struggled with making the right decisions. The board has made sound, responsible decisions as a team that have benefited the patrons, staff and community. In leading the board and my life, I try to adhere to certain principles. I try to do the right thing. I try to do what's right, both for the library and for me in leading my life. I believe that perspectives that disagree with me are the most important here and strive to be objective. I attempt to see the strengths in each person and support them. I always seek to learn more from my mistakes. I bring such skills, among others, that we've been through in the past as research and analysis, as well as problem solving to this office. I appreciate working with a team that allows all aspects of an issue to be explored. I have strong engagement in the community and find that the ties from there are extremely useful for the library. If you reelect me president of the board, I'll continue to improve the financial footing of the library, seeking opportunities for funding such as the Preserve of New York that was just received. I regret that the strategic plan completion was sidetracked this year and will facilitate its finish. I will also continue to support Paul and his leadership of the library. I care deeply about the future of the library and hope that you will elect me this year's president. Thank you.
So now we do the vote for the president.
Yes. Has everybody voted? Has anyone not voted? Joy, do you have seven, seven votes?
You're muted.
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, I have seven responses. I could share my screen.
Okay. One second. Well, thank you and thank you, Evelyn, for running. I look forward to working together in the coming year. We've already reviewed the 2020 budget that's on the agenda. That was done as part of the finance committee.
On reporting?
Yes.
Do we want to go to go through the official vote on the vice president?
Okay, sorry. Thank you once again, Evelyn. So does somebody nominate Evelyn for vice president?
I would.
Everybody wants to nominate you. I think Kirsten was, was first. And second, and so all against? Anyone abstaining? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It can, it carries unanimously. Anything else before we proceed to the next agenda item? Okay, I have after that. So after that, I have the nepotism policy. Is everybody familiar with that?
Yes.
And is everybody comfortable in proceeding with a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Bob seconds? All those against? Those abstaining? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good, feels good to have done. Next on the agenda is the director's report. Paul?
Yes, I, it's a little brief. I did put the results from election in my report. In case you got an older version, we did not have 174,202 people. That's supposed to be 174. For Main Library and then 70 for Lantingburg. We did have 14 absentee ballots, which is not a lot more, but a little bit more than we have had in the past. I think the overall vote probably, I didn't double check, but it's almost about half of what we normally get. So that was definitely down. The tax levy was by a large margin, pretty much five to one. And of course, our two new members were elected. I did send out a report on, and everybody has been concerned about tax collection. And I did send out a report earlier which listed 1,162,000. In the meantime, we did receive another check for about 7,000. Which I predicted we would see additional checks between fall and potentially January. So I, I'm fairly confident that we may see the full amount of the of 1,178,000 by the end of the year. We did, however, as you recall, budget $10,000 as an expense for uncollected taxes. So in terms of the tax levy, we're in very good shape. We will be seeing a state aid check. Actually, I expected it to be. And that ultimately will be only 80% of what we budgeted, which will be a loss of about 3,000. I put in a paragraph about automation services. I know that the board has been concerned with the impact that the state cuts will have on Upper Hudson. And they definitely will impact Upper Hudson. Tim has been working very hard on his budget and also in an effort to not impact members with additional expenses. Well, basically, he sent out an increase to the automation invoice of only 2%. And most of the directors, the directors' meeting have said that they, you know, would be comfortable with a higher rate. We are budgeting somewhere between 5 and 10%, a 5 and 10% increase in automation. So we're pretty comfortable going forward with our 2021 budget. Did we do on Thursday for the Masonry work? We've had some people take a look at the job, and they're going to definitely submit. And I also wanted to say that we wanted to, we have plans to start up the CDTA navigated pass. But we want, we have plans to do it only with credit cards so that we don't have to handle the amount of cash that we had before, which takes up a huge amount of time and effort. So we want to offer it at least, you know, with using, the use of credit cards. So that starts up actually this week. That may be all I have.
Paul, I just wondered, could you quantify what a 2% increase in the automation area would be?
$343.
Oh, great. Wonderful.
You know, I mean, you're looking at 5% is 800 and some odd dollars, and we're already budgeted over that.
Okay.
If I may. Some of what I'm about to say is in the Upper Hudson report in the Dropbox. But after the discussion with the DA, the Directors Association, Tim came up with a 5% and a 10% increase across the board. Still trying to keep it to a simple percentage. He is trying to make sure there are no large swings in a more complex formula so that library boards are not faced with large differentials in monthly budgeting throughout the year. He's also trying to make sure that Upper Hudson can reliably continue to deliver service. And one of the things too is to make sure that everyone understands Upper Hudson's system that this is helping pay for our fees. The structure is going to be built not just on the automation piece of this, which is how we do all our circulation, but there are delivery charges because of Upper Hudson that run the vans that go between all the libraries with all our inter-system loans. It is for all the other services from core training on down that Upper Hudson provides. So if we have a legal question, we go to Tim first and see what he knows. If we need something from youth services or from adult services, you know, we use their staff to provide information and answers. There, Upper Hudson is trying to look at that fee schedule in the sense of all the services that it provides, its members, the member libraries. So right now, there's a two, possibly a five, or even probably 10% increase. I guess he went to the DA, the Directors Association, and is, as last I heard, waiting for response. I mean, or even more tomorrow. But again, ultimately, it's going to be the Upper Hudson Board that's going to make the decision on the actual percentage increase as part of the budgeting process, which will start this month and go for another month, possibly into December. It all depends on how others think they got in revenue and in state aid and all the other ways that has to support itself. So I just want to be, make sure everyone's really clear on that, too. So it's a waiting game right now.
So Paul, what do you think of that?
Couple of things, you know, the automation service and the delivery service is really central to our service. So it's incredibly important, and all of us members recognize, you know, that there was a there is a rumor that there's some money available for PPP that is supposed to be coming through some sort of federal program. Something in the neighborhood of $45,000, which would be distributed to all the area libraries. It had been suggested, partly by me, actually. It had been suggested that the system retain that money. Because while we did have PPP expenses, we had less other expenses. We had less paper, we had less toner, we had less, you know, all that sort of thing that we normally have on our open. So it kind of, it's kind of a war in terms of our budget. So anyway, I don't know that they were going to do that, but that's the kind of feeling that's out there. We're concerned with Upper Hudson, we're concerned with the 20% cut, and we're concerned that those services stay in place. Upper Hudson is not contemplating staff cuts in this budget. So I think, I think things are as good as can be expected.
So would you be concerned if it gets raised, our portion gets raised 10% to be, I guess that would be about 4,000, 4,500, right, more?
It's a little bit over our, our our bill last, well, let's see, our budget was 17.5.
So 10% would be 17.50?
Yeah, our actual bill wasn't 17.5, that's what was budgeted. But what we budgeted for 2021 is somewhere between 5 and 10%. So 10% isn't going to be, oh, my gosh, what are we going to do? You know, it'll be a little bit more than what's budgeted, but not considerably more. And if 5%, you know, we're already over that.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on Paul's report?
I do, actually. With the CDT, CDT best passes, the $5 minimum for credit card, is that just based off of the credit card fee? Like the processing fee? Is that to offset that?
Yeah, essentially. If you go under five, you know, the fees really add up a lot.
I guess, I guess I'm just wondering, since a bus, since like a one-way bus passes a dollar fifty, I'm just thinking about like people in the community who might not be able to spend the whole $5, but need the bus pass. I don't know, historically, has the clientele been purchasing smaller amounts? Or would $5, or is it kind of normal for people to spend the five or more? I'm just worried about taking away that opportunity for people who don't have the whole $5 to spend, but need the bus pass.
Yeah, I I don't, we don't expect it, based on our experience, people put generally quite a bit more.
Okay, that was kind of my question.
I guess it's a wait-and-see sort of thing. If that becomes a real issue, I guess we might have to backtrack a bit. We're not the only people with the bus pass, of course. But generally, people using the card and people putting money on the card are regular, you know, bus riders, so they're putting
Okay.
quite a bit on the card. But, you know, we'll keep an eye on it and see if that becomes, you know, a major issue.
From what I understand, you're trying to avoid handling cash for contamination sake. I understand that you've also eliminated charges for printouts that are below, what, a dollar or something? Or 10 copies so that, again, you won't have to handle cash?
Right.
Handle change or?
Yeah, the biggest thing, though, had been the bus passes in terms of cash. You know, you were looking at, I don't have, something like $70,000 worth of cash over the years. I mean, it's for us, we're not really retailers, you know, we're not used to handling that much cash. So it does take a lot longer, you know, to process that. With the card, at least, we're offering the service, you know, without burdening the staff at this point.
Evelyn, did you want to say something?
I was going to ask Paul, you know, you were referring to the federal money. That's the CARES Act money, correct?
It's what?
The CARES Act money?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, I think I put a piece also in the Upper Hudson report. There's some belief that there's some flexibility in how it's spent. It doesn't need to be PPE per se. So at this point, Upper Hudson's holding out on making a decision on how they're going to distribute that money. And, you know, how, when, weather. But mostly how, when, I'm hoping we'll find out again more tomorrow.
Is tomorrow when your meeting occurs?
Correct.
Not the best timing with our meetings.
No, but luckily I get some advance warnings, so I can share as much information, except for final disbursements of any issue. But then I said, try to send if there's something really timely, a just a message about how it turned out. Updates, like updates.
So the next thing on the, on the agenda is the observations and community feedback. Does anybody have any? Evelyn?
Observation is Hoopla spending still is a very popular service that we're offering. I will say that at least one of the book groups that the library is providing for our community is using Hoopla as a way of getting material in readers' hands for those discussions. And that other people are using it to great great satisfaction. They're very happy with Hoopla. They're also really, we're open.
Yes, I also hear that people are happy with the Zoom book discussions and other items that are available.
I think glad it's available. Everyone knows that there are issues with it still. So it's, it's, I hear a lot of, under the circumstances, we're glad it's something instead of nothing.
I know we were both on a garden workshop recently that I thought was very good. You can pass that on to Carolyn.
And I've been doing the racism class, which is really good. And I asked what Hoopla is.
My way of explaining it is, it's like a streaming service. It's an instant gratification way of obtaining. You get five bars a month from Hoopla per library card. You can stream movies, television series, you can get books, anime, music. They have thousands of items in Hoopla. And it's something that, again, is a, I will call it the consortium or the cooperative of Upper Hudson is the actual client. Upper Hudson has put in a few thousand dollars of its own money to help make it available. And then each of the libraries are assessed a fee according to usage. But Hoopla is just this wonderful service that we're being offering. Many people can't afford or can't get to their own streaming service, so. And there's no waiting. That's the other beauty of it.
So how does one access it?
There should be a link to Hoopla. You go on it, you put in your library card, your library, which is tri-public, create a password, and as they say, you're in like fun.
Okay.
There's a link on our website, too.
Uh huh, good to know.
If you have any problems, just, you know, yes, call the library and answer. I'll help you walk through. I have a few questions of my own. If I click this, do I get, do I get borrowed? No, there's, that's the thumbnail, and then you have to click the blue thing. Okay, got it. I have a lot of questions.
Any other feedback? Okay, moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment? Oh, I don't know if you noticed it, but it looks like Joy put it up on the chat. Okay.
There we go.
So no public comment. The next date and time of the meeting is November 10th. And that's at 5 o'clock for the Finance Committee and at 5:30 for the Board Meeting. Have you knew, have people thought about what committees they want to be on?
I think I'm on the, am I on the Finance Committee?
Well, it's really, you know, a choice, and people who've been on also have the opportunity to change their minds now. But we don't have a lot of board members, and we do appreciate you being involved in those committees that you would enjoy or feel you can contribute to. As I said, our board members who started new last year have made an extraordinary contribution during our past year.
Do you want to review our standing committees and then ask people who, which ones they want to be on?
Okay. Just before we we wrap things up, our nominating committee only meets once a year. So currently, we have pardon?
That's an ad hoc committee, in a way. It's, I don't think it's part of our standing committees.
We, currently, we have a Finance Committee. And go ahead.
The three standing committees are the Building Committee, the Administration Committee, and the Finance Committee. Finance Committee meets half an hour before each of the board meetings and at any other special we announce meeting. And the Building Committee has begun to a once a month fourth Friday at 4 o'clock meeting. Admin has been more as needed in meeting. I think there's a four, we were supposed to do four meetings a month, and I think we've, I mean, a year and method, but it is the one that is not as regularly scheduled.
And one of the major roles for the Administrative Committee is the evaluation of the Director, which is a responsibility of the board. And again, a big achievement for this year that actually was finally finalized and also used just this, just recently. So Paul's shaking his head up and down, but yes, suppose, say, put up with us.
It's only been three years.
Now, you had other ones. Don't say that you know you have. The nepotism policy came out of the Admin Committee, too. The necratism policy came out of the Admin Committee too. Has some others.
So we're, we're hoping to be able to continue yearly, the Evaluation Committee, so it doesn't get so out of date as it has.
Are we going to try to reconstitute the fundraising committee? I mean, I feel like it doesn't make sense to do that right now in the way things are. Well, A, we're somewhat liquid and B, it's sort of hard, like to be creative and do fundraising.
Well, I understand one of our new members has a marketing and possibly fundraising background. So there seems to be a good match.
Okay.
There, but I haven't heard from her regarding whether she agrees or not. And one of the things that is coming up is the annual, annual appeal will be coming up and go before the Board in November. I asked Mark to work on drafting a letter. And I haven't heard from him, but he's on vacation, so I can get back to him after that. Certainly, marketing is something we always need, even at this time.
And I was like to chime in on something that Evelyn mentioned previously, which I support wholeheartedly, is, is there's a, a need to communicate with our constituency and a need to understand our constituency. And we, we are here for a purpose and to understand that purpose is part of, is to understand what our community is looking for. And I think that's part of, fundraising is important. But we need to have an understanding of what we're fundraising for and how we go about doing that. And so I think that's a communication piece is a big part of that as well. So I don't think fundraising is in a vacuum. I think it's part of a communication. And it's a two-way communication, gathering information and giving information out. So I would strongly support a active communication process in conjunction with what the administration does. So we want to make sure we're not talking at cross purposes. I think it's important that that be a very collaborative process that, you know, I don't think we want to, as a board, want to micromanage. We want to understand here, set direction, and how can we help with that process?
Jumping off of that, Kirsten, this Board had previously had another ad hoc committee that was, I think might have even been a little bit more of a standing committee at some point. It was the Outreach Committee. And I thought often that that committee should be reinstituted through this Board, especially after the, not the, what we call the conversations, but the small group meetings where many people were saying we don't think that the library is reaching out to the community like it should. And so it's been on my mind for a long time that we should bring that back as a committee. And some of those things you just mentioned, communication, going out into the community, getting information back. Plus, that's going to be a major part of what we need to do for those minimum standards is if you look at the requirements for January 2020, as of January 2021, it's community input, it's community needs, it's a major part. So I'm advocating very strongly for a, the reinstitutionalizing of the, of the Outreach Committee.
So do people want to talk about, talk about it next time, giving everybody an opportunity to think about it this, in the coming in between? We're also missing an Administrative Committee Chair because Arlene has left the Board. So there are a number of different key roles that needed to be considered. Okay. I have to write that down, Evelyn won't forget though, right?
I'll try not to.
Collaborative effort.
Anything else before we? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The problem isn't always not forgetting, it's also being a, remembering to, to bring it up at the right time.
Anybody have anything else for tonight? Well, thank you, we've done pretty well because having been at meetings at which Victor attended, they've been longer, the longer meetings, so we, we've done well tonight with everything we had on the agenda. Thank you all, I look forward to seeing you. The next committee meeting I think we have is the Building Committee meeting at the, the end of the month. Again, for anyone who wants to attend, we always allow anybody to attend, even if they aren't officially on the committee because they've not chosen that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, nice to see you. Welcome to the new members, thank you for joining us.
Yes.
Thanks.
Look forward to working together with you.
Yes, me too.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Bye, everybody.